9A, external audit results. And I don't know if that's Dr. Kane.
I think we have a, Ms. Davis has a guest.
Yes, Mr. Robert Belt is here and he is the partner in charge of our audit. He's with Belt Harrison Pachek out of Houston.
Belt, welcome.
Good evening. Over on page seven is your independent auditor's report. Very pleased to announce it's a unmodified report, which is the highest level assurance we can give to the district that all the disclosures required by general accepted accounting principles have been included and that the financial statements are materially correct. There is a tremendous amount of financial information within the report. I'm just going to point out a few highlights to you. Over on page thirty-one is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance.
When you say thirty-one, just so y'all are clear, I think it's seventy-five in the agenda packet. And you also have your hard book in front of you. Larry, right there. We've got it in the, we've got a power.
I understand, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Belt, go ahead.
Absolutely. Page thirty-one, in the hard copy anyway, the general fund is presented in the far-left-hand column. Revenues came in at one hundred fifteen million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand. Expenditures were one hundred twelve million, three hundred seventy-one thousand. You had other financing sources in usage, which principally, the largest item was the sale of your real estate, four thousand and ninety-four dollars, four thousand and ninety-four thousand dollars. Together, you had a net increase in fund balance for the year of seven million, five hundred twenty-three thousand. You began the year with a fund balance of thirty-two million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, and you ended the year with a fund balance of forty million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars within your general fund. Just to the right of that is the food program fund. Revenues there came in approximately nine million dollars. Expenditures were nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You had a net loss for the year of seventy-five thousand dollars. You began the year with a fund balance of one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, and you ended the year with a fund balance of one million, four hundred and seven thousand, which you typically would break even on that fund. So that's about where you need to be at. You know it is over that section. One other item I wanted to bring to your attention is a accounting rule that's going to be changing this next year, and generally, they don't talk about accounting rules to board members. They'll typically go to sleep on me pretty quick, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of some key issues that are coming up. It's just maybe come a more of a media issue this next year. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board sets the accounting rules for the United States for governmental entities. They've adopted GASB sixty-eight, which will require for the first time that all governments across the entire United States report pension liabilities on their balance sheet for their government-wide financial statements. There's two different types of financial information we present here. One is the fund level, which I just reviewed the results with you. The other one is the government-wide, which takes into account the government as a whole. That is presented on the full accrual basis of accounting. The other basis of accounting is more of a cash basis. It's the amount that we really get down to. So on the full accrual basis, for the first time ever, this pension liability is going to be reported on the balance sheet. And so there's going to be many governments across the United States, when they put that liability onto their books, they're going to be in deficit position. So there will probably most likely a lot of media discussion about reporting that pension liability and the condition of governments throughout the United States. So I just want you to be aware of that and be educated on that particular topic. There's talking points on our website, if you need to brief yourself on it before a media-type event, about that change. What I like to kind of characterize it to people is, when you first have a child, you know you're going to send that child to school, but you don't have to record that full amount of the college liability when they're one-year-old. What's important is you have a plan to put that child through, to pay for that child's education, and you're putting aside money as you go to pay for that college. And that's the same thing you're doing right now with your pension plan, is you're actually being required to contribute a little bit of money each year towards that pension system. And so that for, therefore, the most important thing is you have a plan. And the district has a plan, it's working the pan. It doesn't matter that you're going to have a large liability out there, the money will be there when that liability comes due. So that's a key thing I wanted to point out to you. That concludes my remarks. More than happy to entertain any questions you have.
I got one question.
Ms. Manning?
Cheryl, really, this, in the general fund at four million dollars, is that, are those designated or undesigned funds, or is there anything in there?
On what page are you on?
On that thirty-one that you just.
Page thirty-one, and which number?
The general fund, number ten.
Down at the bottom, the fund balance? That could be both. If you look over on page twenty-nine, it will tell you how those are maybe assigned or committed down at the bottom.
Okay.
So we basically have thirty-six point seven million that's unassigned and just free to use it for any legal purpose.
Okay, and what's your figure you always tell us that you would like us to stay at?
Our board policy is at twenty percent, and that's typically what the bond rating agencies are looking at, although there's some disagreement on that number, but typically, the bond rating agencies like to see about twenty percent.
And are we at that?
Yes, we're above that. We are, I haven't calculated this number, and I'll show that next month, but we've been running around twenty-six percent, I think, somewhere in that range.
Other questions? Ms. Sykes?
Mr. Belt, regarding the change that will be forthcoming with regard to the liability, is there any direction as far as how that liability is to be calculated?
The TRS plan itself, Teachers Retirement System, hires an actuary, and they calculate that liability on behalf of the plan, and then they show each district what their portion of that liability is.
Is there any issues regarding a level of unfunded liability in terms of the overall TRS?
Well, the great thing about participating in the statewide system is they're very diligent about being very conservative in their calculation, and so I would say in the teachers' retirement system that there's not. There are probably plans throughout the United States where that is not the case. So I think that's the, those are going to be the poster children you're going to be hearing about this next year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Belt? All right. Thank you, sir. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the annual financial and compliance report.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the annual financial and compliance report for the year ended August thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Very thorough, by the way. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Teakell. No other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Gifts and grants, Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to announce that Antioch Community Church of Waco donated
Thank you, Ms. Belt.
Two thousand dollars to Guam for geometry supplies. The Waco Business League donated two thousand five hundred dollars to Guam for electronics and robotics supplies. Lincoln Electric donated power equipment to Guam valued at fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. Manitou Group donated two thousand dollars to Guam for general use. The Clifton Foundation donated five thousand dollars to Guam to fund toolkit scholarships. The December gifts report is enclosed in your agenda. The total amount in gifts, cash, items, service, given to the district for December two thousand fourteen is eighty-four thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, fifty-four cents, and there are no grants report for the month of January, so I would like to recommend that the board accept the gifts as listed to Waco State.
Thank you. Dr. Kane, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the administration recommendation of these gifts to Waco State.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Any other questions, comments? Mr. DePree, can we pull that mic towards you?
(laughing).
You love doing that.
Yeah.
The, okay, the gift from the Dawsons that's going to be next month, was that?
The one for Guam?
The Dawsons, yeah.
Yes, actually, they, we wanted them to be here, and they had an engagement, so they will be here next month.
Great, all right. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item C, rezoning of Carver Middle School with public input. Is there anybody from the public here this evening that would like to address the board? I know we've given folks numerous opportunities to address this issue, and I don't see anyone here this evening. All right, then we'll move on. Dr. Kane, is there a presentation from the administration on this?
No, sir. I just, this is background. At the October board meeting, board workshop, the board indicated a desire to gather input from those interested in sharing their thoughts about a proposed rezoning, and that information is in the board member packets.
All right. And as I recall the schedule, if the board is inclined, your initial schedule proposal involved taking action tonight if the board was inclined to do so. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And we are posted for possible action. Are there any board members that want to comment on either the input we've received or on the proposal that's been presented?
Mr. President.
Ms. Teakell.
I just need some clarification on the recruitment of H.J. Moore students. Where are we on that?
How we're doing that or what we're thinking about doing?
I guess how we're doing that.
Okay.
Because I'd actually noticed some change in advertising I saw.
Okay. To make certain you get the most up-to-date and latest information, how did we do this year, or the last year we had recruitment opportunities, or the eighth-grade orientation, also known as eighth-grade orientation at?
Last year, we bussed all eighth graders to come look at universities and H.J. Moore academies. So this year, we're not doing that. Both campuses have an open house where we're highlighting, ours is the twenty-ninth and Ed's was
Last night.
Last night. So we're both highlighting our two campuses and what we have to offer. And then to prepare for that, we sent out a mailing to all eighth-grade parents about our open house, about the academies at University on the twenty-ninth, and invited them, and that's where I think we are. So we're not planning to bus eighth graders to come look at H.J. Moore academies this year.
So in the future, the idea is that you have a Waco High night at Waco High, you have University High night at University High, and you just invite all eighth graders to come to both or one or the other or neither?
Right. And the timing to go along with that is they start preparing their course, the counselors start meeting with eighth graders to prepare where they would like to go and what courses they would like to take, starting in a couple of weeks. So that's the reason we have the two open houses now.
So there, so there is no more recruiting?
In the sense of bussing folks over.
Yes, correct, yes.
But campuses can still promote their program, I mean.
By inviting people to come and?
At open houses. I know I've seen not only H.J. Moore, but a number of our campuses buy magazine ads and some of the back-to-school. I mean, campuses will still be allowed to do that.
Well, that's, unless the board considers that recruiting. To me, the recruiting was the physical taking of the children, almost sounded like we were kidnapping.
No, I understand.
Taking the students there physically and saying, walk around and look. I consider advertisements, if they want to have, when you get there, the kids singing and dancing, or you just so happen, you've got the musical going on and you run a little segment of that, that if they come to your campus, you're free to promote like crazy.
And I, I don't want to catch you off. I mean, that's the way I envision it. What we were talking about was the physical bussing in or of students taking part of their class day to come look at H.J. Moore.
Right, right.
That piece is being eliminated. We're not, if I understand what you're saying, you're not limiting any campus from promoting their program publicly
In a hard sell.
And encouraging folks to come take a look.
There's a publication, you know, that's out in January, which is the educational issue.
Right.
You know, all over town in central Texas advertises, you know, what they've got going on at their campus.
Right. I just want to make sure we weren't prohibiting that sort of awareness piece.
Right.
Okay. Other questions, Ms. Teakell?
No.
Okay. Comments, questions, anybody else? Pettis' hand went up first, Ms. Sykes, and you can go after.
Yes, we have given the community many chances to make comments, public comments. And I believe the only meeting we had, thirty, forty people, was the very first one, and most of them were just concerns. There was no argumentation or anything like that. They were just concerned about grandfathering other students, some of their children. And, but other than that, I've heard nothing else, so I don't know if any other board member's heard anything.
Ms. Sykes?
Mr. President. We've been looking at this for quite some time, and I think, as Mr. Perez indicated, solicited input from the community in several opportunities. And I appreciate the comments on the recruiting, the answers that we got on the recruiting, because I know that was an expressed concern by several members of the board. So it looks like that has progressed to another level of utilizing our campus resources to let eighth graders look at those campuses and let them decide as a family, as a student, the pros and the cons. But my concern is that, as we find ourselves competing with the best and brightest students, we compete not only, well, certainly with other school districts, but also this process has kind of introduced the thought that we're competing within ourselves, within the district. And I think, I think there's an expressed desire that that should stop. It strikes me that although we are changing the process, it strikes me that as we address rezoning, my feeling is that that's just resorting in another form of recruitment. I mean, we're carving out a piece of the district and several of these options, and I think we're getting away from our academic focus. I have not been able to determine through any of the summaries, any of the discussions, how we are moving forward on our academic mission as a district. And I, as I look at equality and fairness across the district at the high school levels, what I see on the summaries, the demographic studies, et cetera, what I see is that the two high schools currently are at very, what I'll call, very low utilization of capacity. And that doesn't give rise to any kind of, in my opinion, disproportionate advantage of one or the other. I want to, I'd like to hear some underlying reasoning from an academic standpoint, that this is a sound, if we do enact anything on rezoning, what the underlying academic support is. And the other thing I'm concerned is that our discussion of rezoning is perpetuating some zoning changes that we've done several times in prior years already. So we're sending a message out that there's really no underlying academic reason. We've resolved the recruitment problem. The campuses are equal from a utilization standpoint. That's good from a taxpayer standpoint. So if I can hear something from an academic standpoint, I sure would like to hear it that would move our mission forward. And plus, well, before we do move on this, I would appreciate or certainly look forward to hearing the administration's position on this.
I think the administration's been pretty neutral on this, and I don't want to put them on the spot. Is your question, do board members start articulate sort of their academic or board members or administration, talking about potential academic impacts?
Absolutely, any source.
Dr. Kane, do you have a response in terms of how this impacts academically, if we make this change, one way or the other?
No, I haven't looked into it academically to see if there would be a change. We just look at it from the aspect of, it was a question of rezoning, and so we've looked at that. But academically, we've got two strong campuses, and I think you're going to be good to go, whichever one that you happen to be attending.
Okay. Are there any board members who want to respond to Mr. Sykes' question in terms of a academic motivation for doing this? I mean, and I'm not, that may be unfair, you've all got your own reasons, I don't mind putting anybody on the spot to articulate any way you want to vote. Does anybody want to address Mr. Sykes' concern or question?
I just share Mr. Sykes' interest in what the administration's recommendation is. If there's not, if the administration is neutral, or if the administration has an opinion.
Do you have an opinion or recommendation?
When this began, it was my understanding that we had a group of parents and community people who really wanted this. And so I see that very differently, because when, we like to listen to our community and respond to that. Well, over time, and I responded very favorably to that. I said, well, really, if the parents want that, that's something that would be, something we'd really want to look at. Well, over time, I don't know if people changed their mind or what, but it was then my understanding that that wasn't necessarily true. That was not something that a vast majority of the community and our parents want. When it comes to rezoning, if there's any way you can avoid rezoning, you want to avoid rezoning, it is very disruptive. It splits families, it causes problems, it causes hard feelings, and it's not something you want to go into unless there is a compelling reason. And if there's a compelling reason, I don't have a problem coming to the board and saying, like in the consolidation, I didn't think we had a choice, that for all the reasons I won't go into, it was something we had to do. If a big subdivision was built somewhere and it negatively affected, I would come to the board and say, hey, we don't have room for these kids, we'd want to move them. And I have not heard a compelling reason for this, and therefore, I, now, obviously, if the board feels like there's a compelling reason, but if you're just asking from administration because there is not a compelling reason, and I have not heard a hue and cry wanting this, which is something that we would be very responsive to, that, no, I don't see a compelling reason to do this.
Mr. President.
Ms. Manning, is that who asked? I'm sorry, I was leaning back in my chair. Was that Mr. Quay, Ms. Manning? All right, go ahead.
But no, we, like I said, we have, this was tossed to me even a couple of years ago, and in the community, it has been discussed. And like I said, we have given ample opportunities for, against, for, or against. And basically, as they say, you know, when talk on the street is, no one has anything against it. The biggest meeting we had was the one at J.H. Heinz. And if you remember correctly, in that meeting, there was no major opposition. And I've been, I've been asking, ever since the meeting at Heinz, I've talked to people, questioned people and everything, and told people, hey, if you've got a problem with this, let me know. And I don't know whether, if you want to say, you can't say that it's been a lack of knowledge, because it's been, it's been on the front page of the news. We have promoted it on, in our agendas and everything like that. And the people who I have talked to, and I'm not going to say I've talked to everybody in the community, but the majority of people who I've talked to, that they have been in favor. And they understand that, you know, like I said, we're not taking all of it, but the majority, you know, that's why, when we had that meeting, that's why I asked Mr. McAdoo to come up and question him about what percentage of his students was that going to affect and everything. And I really do believe in, like I say, as far as the educational part of it, I don't think that going to Waco High, going to university, you're going to get the same basic, solid education, no matter which school you're at. And as I, my emphasis is that no one, and I've been open, and I have told people that I've talked to, hey, if you talk to somebody else, they won't know something, come see me. I have not had any objection to this plan. So my, so that's kind of the direction of what I'm going in. If there was some major objection, I would, I would have brought it up, presented it myself. Or there was one gentleman who'd been trying to come to one of the meetings, but he said his son played basketball on Thursday night, and he told me, he said, well, I'm for it. He says it's the best thing that we, he thinks it's one of the best moves we're going to make. So, but like I said, as far as anyone coming up and telling me that they are against it, they don't think it's right, anything, I have not, I have not heard anything. And that's just District One trustee information.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Other comments, questions? Ms. Pettis?
I, that really pertains to my district that I represent. I'm like Mr. Manning, everybody I've run to, I've run across is that they're all for it. Now, I like that idea, but my biggest concern, as I've stated many times, is that of the shrinkage of South Waco. Okay? Three weeks ago, no, it was during our Christmas break, ad came out, a newspaper article came out, and what I've been explaining to, to the people and to the board is that it's going to shrink even more. Lot of developers are looking at the areas, a lot of them already bought, and Baylor bought some of the South Waco property. So now, those people are moving. Now, where they're going to move, I don't know. So I see South Waco shrinking what it is today, from Eleventh Street down to Baylor. And also, they're looking beyond that, but not anytime soon. But I see that, that it's really going to happen here. Properties are going to be buying, and they're going to start construction real soon. So I'm going to lose some people there in those areas. Now, whether they're going to move to La Vega, whether they're going to move to North Waco, I don't know. So that's my biggest concern. All I see is university shrinking instead of leveling off with, close enough to Waco High. And we're looking at maybe possibly a three-A school, maybe two-A. And I don't, I don't, I don't like that. But as far as any negative thoughts in my district, there's none whatsoever.
Thanks, sir. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
When do we intend to make a decision?
Sorry, I got it myself.
All right. You can cut that.
Can we get a clip on?
A magnet.
You don't want one of those for me. When do we intend to make a decision?
Tonight.
Tonight? We're, we can take.
We can if we want to, we don't have to.
Folks want additional information, if you want a formal, not to put you on the spot, but if you want a formal recommendation from the administration that they have vetted, we can get that. If you're ready to move forward tonight, we can do that. I mean, we are, we are posted for, as it says, possible actions, but you're, we can obviously.
Coach Willis wants to address it.
Coach Willis?
Good evening. How are y'all? I'd like to thank the board, first of all, for a few minutes of latitude in order to allow me an opportunity to speak on this issue of rezoning, and I really see it as a matter of equity. And I'd like for you just to, like I said, give me just a little bit of latitude here, and you think of it in terms of, or maybe see it through, through my eyes, or through perhaps someone from, from South Waco. We're looking at this as a matter of equity, and quite frankly, I see this as, again, as the district being at a precipice, at a critical point. This is a critical point for us. Mr. Perez just talked about the shrinkage of South Waco. That's one thing. But the other thing is this. The other thing is, right now, if we, if we do what we've talked about doing, I think you need to take a look at four years from now, where would we be? If what we're saying is we're not going to recruit through H.J. Moore Academy, we're not going to allow ourselves to do that, then the only thing that we're going to bring in to University High School is the two to three hundred students that we're getting from Cesar Chavez. Now, you do the math yourself, and you do that in four years, we're at somewhere around twelve hundred kids. So we're definitely going to be a three-A, four-A high school. Now, what I'm proposing to you, what I'm proposing to you is this. Yes, I do see some academic importance in this, because of the research that is not only prevalent in this district, but is, that is standard for the state of Texas. The research, good practice says that, that the more kids who are able to participate in athletics kids who are able to participate in athletics and extracurricular activity, I call it the Shepherd Rule, that have that carrot that's hanging over their head, well, those kids are going to, first of all, be at school, they're going to, second of all, participate, they're going to, third of all, be cognizant of their grades and do well in their grades, by and large. And so that's what I'm telling you that a move like this would do for us. A move like this, instead of having three middle schools go to one house, and one middle school going to the other house, will allow us to do this. It will allow us to have the opportunity to give everybody a chance in W I S D. It would give every, it would give those kids, uh, maybe on the, maybe who can't make it at, at another school, who, who were second, uh, 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 second chair, an opportunity to, to, uh, have a renaissance and have another opportunity. And that's what I'm talking about, uh, is equity. I'm talking about our district giving ourselves a chance to be good on both sides, uh, at everything. And I'm certainly not just talking about in the band, I'm not just talking about a football team. Although, uh, we, we can, we can put our heads in the sand about sports if we want to, but Midways and other school districts are building big, um, multimillion dollar facilities. And we, we, we are the standard right now as far as athletics and those sorts of things. Our buildings are as nice as anybody's. All I'm telling you is that this is a good move, it's a good move for South Waco, but it's an even better move for W I S D, because it creates quality and it creates competition. And folks, even in business, that's good.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Let me ask, let me ask one question.
Yes, absolutely, more than one, I'm here.
Because, because I, you know, I have the greatest amount of respect, heck, I got to introduce you at your press conference. I agree with everything you've just said. When, when I look at the proposal that's being presented to the board, I do see one middle school that seems to be disadvantaged in that, uh, you'll still have three middle schools that feed exclusively to one high school. So that students at Tennyson, uh, students at Chavez, students at Indian Spring can begin to learn the system, if you will, uh, of, for those in athletics, for example, that they'll, that they'll be implemented at the high school they're feeding into.
Yes, sir.
Uh, or they can begin to learn, uh, the, the, the way, uh, the terminology that the, the band uses in their marching formations and the drum.
Absolutely.
But we leave one middle school, Carver, that doesn't really get that advantage, because half of it's going to go to university, half of it's going to go to Waco High. And so those students really don't get the advantage of beginning to learn, uh, the program of, of their feeding school, because, uh, we're not going to divide within the middle school. Uh, and it's not going to be large enough to have two football teams and two drama programs. And so how would you, I mean, because that, that's my only concern about this, is it does look like we're being unfair to one school.
I got it, Pat, and, and you're right, we would be being unfair to one school. Now, let me tell you that my thought process on that, is you have to do that, you have to add by subtracting. And, and adding by subtracting, in this case, would mean those kids who are, uh, are siphoned off, who are siphoned off, for lack of a better term tonight, to go to Waco High, you send those kids to Waco High. Those kids, you, you can't send those kids to Carver and then have, uh, two separate sets of playbooks there, uh, two sets of band instru, you know what I mean, uh, techniques. You, the, so what I'm saying, in the beginning, you, if there's a sliver of kids in North Waco who, uh, I think we talked about in your proposal that's on the board, that needs to go to North Waco, I think that's great. Send those kids to North Waco, but you have to do it on the front end. You can't send them to Carver and then our, our, our teachers are going over there, our band instructors going over there, our choir teachers are going over there, and we're teaching them our technique, and then they're going to Waco High and they have to relearn everything all over again. I think you do that on the front end, just like they do everywhere else. You make that decision, you send those kids to where they, where they're going, it'll be good for Waco High, and it would be good for, uh, university, that it would then get, in essence, another 100 kids, whereas Waco High would get 45 from the numbers that Dr. Dr. Shepherd put up at our very first meeting. Waco High would get 45 of those North Waco kids, um, university would get 100 predominantly East Waco kids is who they would be, according to that, uh, that, what's, what's, is on the board. And it would be 100, uh, of those estimated kids, which in four years would mean 400 kids would be coming to university, which would solidify the numbers at university and its 4A, 5A level.
If I understand what you're saying, Coach, if I, if you look at that map, you've got that middle kind of up and down section that goes to Indian Spring. And the section immediately above that is Carver, uh, but it would go to Waco High School. You're saying, your preference would be that that area be rezoned to either Indian Spring on the front end? Because right now, that's still Carver.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying.
What I see is this, Pat. I see this, this area right here, in red, and I see all of this going to Waco High.
It does. And that area right above, right there, is Carver.
It's Carver.
So those, so those kids at Carver, if they live on that side of the attendance zone, will go to Waco High.
Right.
And so the question is, in middle school, are they going to be learning both, as you say, you can't have two playbooks. So are we being unfair to that, those, that group of kids? Or, you know, which system do they learn? That's the question.
That's, that's why I'm saying, you don't, you don't put them in a quadrant. You send those kids to Waco High. We're saying that.
Well, they'll go to Waco High, I'm talking about in middle school, in seventh and eighth grade.
That's what I'm saying. You send them, uh, to Indian Springs, you send them to Carver, excuse me, you send them to Tennyson.
That's what I'm saying, you would have us redraw that entire attendance zone so they go to Indian Spring, not to Car, not to Carver.
So all of Carver would go to uni, it would be just two middle schools, Carver and Chavez go to University High, totally?
That's what I.
Okay, okay. So actually, it'd be option three, which we don't have.
Well, no, because he's not even splitting it. All of this would be Indian Spring.
Pat, let me make sure, let me make sure that we're understanding you. What, what I'm saying is, as I look at this, all of this right here is Waco.
You're right.
I'm saying in middle schools, we're sending these guys to Carver right now. I'm saying, no, they're not Carver, because they're on, in North Waco, they need to go to Waco High. So if they're going to go to Waco High, you either want to have to send them to Tennyson or Indian Springs, in, in advance. I mean, you're, you're going to have to send.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And I don't want anybody to run those numbers. I mean, we haven't, I mean, the proposal right now, tonight, is those kids would continue to go to Carver and then go to Waco High. In other words, these kids from all these elementary schools would come together for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Carver, and then those on the east side of the river would go to university, those on the west or north side of the river would go to Waco High. And that's, it's, it's what you're talking, your proposal of zoning those kids to Indian Spring may be workable, but that's not, we haven't run those numbers, and I don't want anybody to propose that.
The only thing about the program that we have on the board tonight is that it is going to perpet, perpetuate the same sort of dissension that we've had. My very best friends, you know, we, we, you know, we're going to compete against each other. Now, all of a sudden, he and I both are going to be essentially selling the same kids on two different playlists. We don't want to create that sort of dissension in, in Waco I S D.
Well, that's why I was asking, that's why I wanted your thoughts on this option.
I think, actually, we had this option down at one time, and the concern was the drive from the, the furthest part of Carver to university high school as opposed, I think distance was one of the issues. And I think we may.
Well, what he's saying is that's going, he would have it go ahead and go to Waco High, just down to Indian Spring for middle school. And I don't know what the capacity is at Indian Spring. In other words, I don't know if you could take that, the part in the center at the top.
Mr. President.
In other words, this area, he would have go to Indian Spring instead of Carver.
Okay.
So all of this would be Indian Spring. And the question, I don't know, we have not run those numbers.
I can tell you what.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Manning?
If, when, when we originally discussed this, and, uh, like I say, at Heinz', and looking at the notes from Heinz', uh, you know, I asked Mr. McAdoo how many of the students would that affect, and he said it would infect, uh, the majority of the students. So that tells me that it's going to be a limited number of students that live up in that far north part of the zone right now, the tennis zone for Carver. It's not that men, it's not that many kids that, that, uh, from Mr. McAdoo's, uh, situation says it's not going to affect that many kids. So I mean.
The kids that go to, you're talking about, all the students at Cedar Ridge?
143, what we said.
He said 145.
Well, 145, 143. But the majority of them live in the East Waco area. I guess, I mean, so, so really, uh, and what, what Coach is saying, that if you look at, if you take the rest of them, uh, maybe we need to know that exact number, but that is not going to be, is not going to be, uh, uh, what's half of, uh, 14, or 70 of them, it's not going to be 70 kids that's going to be affected, that's going to have to end up going. You won't, figure they may go to, uh, Indian Springs, or Tennyson, or something like that, you know?
Tennyson takes capacity, they end up going to Indian Spring.
Yeah.
I just haven't seen, I mean, all I'm saying, I don't know that anybody's, I'm, it may be a good solution, I don't know that anybody's run those numbers. I don't know if Indian Spring has the capacity to take in those kids. I've not seen anybody who's done that. We haven't had the demographer anybody do that.
I think it's worth our time, and I think it's worth our effort to run the eff, run the numbers, uh, to take time to run the effort, run the numbers. The reason I say that is because we're, we're getting to the point where we're starting to fight against ourselves here. And, 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 and we, you know, you can, you can, the only time you can throw a good punch is when you've got a good solid fist. And right now, we're hitting with the open palm. And I, all I'm asking you to do is take a serious look at this, uh, so that both schools are equitable. I love Waco High, uh, love Waco High. I love Waco High, okay? I want everybody to understand that. I'm a product of W I S D. I love university high school. I want both of these schools to be successful. Last thing I want to say, our facilities are so beautiful. Pearland and, uh, Pearland Dawson, Pearland was playing in a playoff game, and both of those football coaches, Pearland and Pearland Dawson's coaches came down and rode on that bus, and we, we held them up at Waco High, excuse me, at university for about four hours. We just held them there until their game was going to be played. All I'm saying is, those two coaches were as tight as Marty Herbst and I. And I would just like and have an opportu, opportunity to keep that relationship alive through, uh, cheering him on and him cheering me on 364 days a year. On that 65th day, I'm going to try to get him.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Sykes.
Coach Willis, what is the, what is the cutoff on 4A?
The cutoff on 4A, uh, the cutoff on, for us, is 2099, and the cutoff for 4A is, um, I believe, without looking, I think it is, uh, uh, 900, it's right at 1,000.
Based on that, do you ever think university high would get down to 1,000 students?
Based on the numbers that I'm looking at, with, maybe not right at 1,000, but I'm, Mr. Sykes?
It won't, it won't get there.
I'm, I'm, well, maybe you're right.
It won't get there, okay. And your, your, your comment on equality, those two schools right now are, their utilization are virtually identical.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So tell me what's not fair and equal about two campuses that have the same utilization based on their capacities?
Okay, let me, let me try to delineate some of these things for you. Uh, let me just start.
My concern is, I think you're looking at it from a coaching perspective, and, and looking at the athletic piece of it, which I respect you for.
Yes, sir.
But that's why I asked the question about academics. And you, you did a great job of tying the two together, but there is another story at Waco High. What, what, we're prospectively looking at moving students from that Carver zone, which is the current one.
Yes, sir.
And we've been looking at this for, well, Mr. Manning said, virtually two years since it started. You know, you're here, speaking of university, I'm not hearing anything from Waco High as far as them saying that, that there's justification to assist you in this change. So where, where's the equality there? I'm not seeing it, except from a football coach's perspective, and then ultimately tying it into academics. I, I, I'm just not seeing it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, what I'd ask you to do is, is, uh, just to, just to look, Mr. Sykes, at some of the, some of the, uh, just some of the, the things that are, that are going on. I mean, uh, when we, when we talk, uh, when I talk about equality, if you do what we're talking about doing, and you, and you take away university's ability to recruit, okay, then you're going to.
So all of a sudden, recruiting is an important aspect?
Certainly it is. I mean, and let me tell you why. Because right now, the school is at about 1,700. And you're, you're, you're asking me about academics, and I'm telling you, yes, we have a good school at, at university, and so we want 1,700. So when you're telling me that it's, no, we want you to be down to 1,000, and you didn't say that. But I'm saying, if we're, if we're saying that it's okay for our school to be down to 1,000, I'm saying that that's not what the stakeholders.
Not saying that at all. I'm saying that's a cutoff for 4A, which you indicated, and I don't think the numbers are going to get that low. The demographer's report doesn't show that. I mean, it shows fairly steady, in fact, level enrollment. So I'm, I'm, I'm still asking, help me understand your, your approach that is anything other than a coach's perspective.
No, it's, it's, it's a coach's perspective, but, uh, uh, Mr. Sykes, it, Mr. Sykes, it's also a parental perspective, it's also a community member's perspective, that this is good for this community, uh, to have two schools that are equitable, two schools that won't have to compete against each other for kids, two schools that, uh, now, again, listen to me for a second here, you're saying that you're going to take away university's ability to, to get clients.
Use the word recruit.
Okay, to recruit, to recruit, okay, to recruit kids. But then, on the other hand, you're going to then allow Waco High to go to Tennyson and recruit at Atlas, you know, and do things like that. All I'm, all I'm telling you is, is that there needs to be some equity here. If you're going to have one do it, then you've got to open it up for the other. We, we can't, we can't be one-sided here. There are two different groups here in town. And, and, and a stake is, the guy that lives in stake, in South Waco shouldn't feel, and I'm giving you what they've told me, they shouldn't feel like second-class citizens.
Let me say this. I mean, this is, if we're looking at doing something along lines of what you've proposed tonight.
Yes, sir.
I mean, essentially, we'd be taking, there'd only be one elementary school feeding Carver. It would be part of J H Heinz', and no other elementary schools would be feeding it. And I guess one question is, will that leave Carver large enough to be able to offer all the programs they need? And it might. I mean, I just, those are just aren't numbers, we, we haven't run those numbers. And I don't, I don't think we can make that decision tonight. And if, if there are folks here who are interested in doing what Coach Willis is discussing, because it will address this concern of kids at Carver having to learn to, being at a disadvantage compared to the other middle schools, uh, then we probably need to run numbers. Because my recollection is, Carver's already our smallest middle school. And if we take away Cedar Ridge and, what, Brook, that, that feed it now, it may get even smaller and harder, harder to be sustained. And, and I just, I just don't know the answer to that, Keith, one way or the other. And so if that, so it's, I, I don't know if that's another option. I don't know if we want a formal recommendation from the administration, uh, or if we want to move forward tonight on option two as presented and just split Carver. But I, I do appreciate your thoughts, because I think.
Well, it, it, was that a question of mine?
Yeah, I don't know what it was.
Because what I would like to do, and, and because, uh, Coach Willis is kind of at a disadvantage as far as we're looking at different screens and whatever, is that if he would come over to the office, we would get Dr. Tapera on the phone, get a screen going that she's got going. And I think when you see how, like, for instance, below the river is part of Heinz', and we would, that means if Heinz' would fully go to Carver, then we need to move those other Heinz' kids. I mean, so, but you just don't know that because you, until you look at those numbers. So what I'd like to do is give you the opportunity, with Dr. Tapera on the phone, to look at your screen and say, well, let's try this. And then she would say, here are the problems with this, and here's the good things about this.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you could go, oh, whoa, 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 that created another problem. What about this? Because I'd like for you to at least have the opportunity to say, hey, the best-case scenario is this. And then, because it's, one reason we kind of push this to January is in case it didn't work in January, we still have some time. What, a major rezoning, you need to do it a little bit earlier. Or you can make your, if you can.
I, I have another question. Now, I, I did not realize that, that if we make this rezoning, uh, for Carver, that's going to rezon the elementary schools also?
Well, it when.
If we do what he's talking about.
If we do what Coach Willis talks about. Below, below the river, Heinz crosses the river.
Right.
And so Coach Willis said, make the river the, the, the line, and that would affect Heinz'. Now, are there three kids living there? It could be. Are, are there half the Heinz' kids living there? I don't know, that's what, we would want that information, so we go on facts.
So, Mr. President? Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Sykes. So we're looking. So we're looking for yet another option that is just presented tonight after we've gone through this whole process. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I raise a concern about.
Yes.
Option two maybe not being fair to Carver. And Mr. Willis had a, a solution, and I'm not, and I'm not sure the number's supported or not. All I'm saying is, if, if anybody on this board wants to pursue that, we, we can't move forward tonight. If, if folks are saying they're okay moving forward and taking a vote on option two as presented and moving forward, we can go and do that tonight. But I, I, I just don't want, I don't wanna take any, I would not be prepared tonight to, one, rezone as presented in option two, and additionally, rezone Cedar Ridge and Brook over to Indian Spring without knowing what the impact is on all the other schools, and that's all I'm saying, Alan.
Yeah, gotcha.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Pettis had his thing first, and we'll go to Ms. Teakell.
I'd like to make a, a comment to, uh, Mr. Sykes. Uh, for a long time, we've talked about, you and I, and you've commented that you wish that there, that university and Waco High could get along, that there wouldn't be, uh, hatred against each other. Now, equity is part of the puzzle, okay?
Certainly.
And you had a big concern about that, and I'm saying to you that equity is part of the puzzle. It's a good way to start.
That's fine, I, I respect that. But looking at the current zones, and again, I look at capacity utilization, they're equal. To me, that's equal, utilization. And if you have one school that has a capacity for two thousand, and they're at nineteen hundred students, and another stu, school that has a capacity of twenty-three hundred, and they're at fifteen hundred students, that is one campus that's drastically underutilized. We build these schools with a, with a set level of capacity, and if we approach it, we're, we're maxed out. So, right now, with equal utilization, and that's a, in my opinion, that's a good tool of measuring equality, I'm okay with where we are right now, and I'm okay with the programs at university, I'm okay with the athletics at university, I'm okay with the academics at university. Equally so, based on our current maps, zoning maps, I'm comfortable with Waco High.
Alan, let me ask you one question on that.
Sure.
And I'm not, I'm just trying to think things through.
Sure.
If we go forward with the administration's proposal that we no longer recruit to A.J. Moore, the kids no longer come over and see it, so it's basically just an awareness, so that presumably, you're gonna get fewer transfers out of Waco High, right? Um, I don't, I don't disagree with what you just said, but it does seem like it's gotta be one or the other, that if you, if we eliminate the recruiting, so there are fewer kids going to A.J. Moore, and we don't redraw the attendance zone, then based on these numbers, you get to twenty-one hundred and thirteen hundred instead of sixteen hundred and sixty, if you're just looking at the residing enrollment, i- i- ten years out. And so that, that would be my only concern about what you've just said, is if we eliminate that recruiting piece, university does get smaller.
And I understand that.
If you don't do the A.J. Moore piece.
Very valid point.
I just don't know how to work through that.
But do we know, without recruiting?
Oh, no, go ahead, Alan.
Do we know, without recruiting, how that would impact the numbers? I don't know that we've, we've tested that yet.
You're saying it's possible we may have the same number?
Absolutely. We know there's a demand for the academies at A.J. Moore, and that's what we wanted. I mean, we want to build that program over there. I'd love to see nineteen hundred at, at university, but not to the detriment of Waco High, losing, I mean, that number of students. So that's why I'm saying that, that I don't see the inequality. We've got programs structured at both schools right now that are moving along just fine. The faculty and administration at each high school is outstanding, and I think they're gonna perform very, very well. Again, my concern, and I hope our focus is on academics, period, exclamation point. I asked originally, I'm not seeing any underlying reason that this will boost our mission relating to academic performance. Now, I, Coach Willis, I understand what you're saying, that U I L and sports are an integral part, yes, but there's a lot of students that don't utilize those aspects either, and we're, we're needing to address those individuals as well.
Certainly.
So, I, you know, it's, it appears to me to, in its final form, resort down to an athletic issue and not an academic issue, and I, I, I mean, I, I, I think that's the direction you're coming from, is that you wanna build your athletic program, and I, I respect that.
We do.
But Coach Herbst wants to do the same thing, Coach, Coach Love wants to do the same thing, Dr. Shepherd wants to do the same thing, but when you have a utilization issue and the, and the, and the comment about reaching four A, that's not gonna happen. So I don't understand that even being a, a speculation.
Well, that's even worse then, in, in my opinion, is that if, if we're, if we're gonna stay at five A, but we're gonna reduce the numbers in our school so that they're so low, we're, I mean, that's even worse to me, Mr. Sykes.
Because of, because of athletics?
Well.
Because of athletics?
Yeah, let's use athletics, then let's use everything else that comes along with it. Let's use band, let's use choir, let's use theater, everything else is gonna put, put us at an unfair disadvantage, because we're a smaller school by choice, and we've said that the other school gets to be a bigger school, we get to be a, a smaller school by choice, that's what we want, and then we're gonna put, throw us in a gunfight with a rusty nail in our head. We're gonna tell us to go fight this battle with a third less of the kids. And that's all I'm saying to you, is, is look at it through the lens of both eyes, and then you make a good decision, I fully trust this board. I'm just saying, let's look at it, and let's be fair, and let's be equitable about, equitable about it.
Ms. Teakell, then Mr. Murphy, and then somebody over here, and then we'll go from there. Ms. Teakell?
Um, I'm really concerned about the amount of time that we're spending on this, when we have really serious, um, overarching needs as a district. Um, this, this particular issue was not part of our strategic planning, it wasn't part of our goals for this year, it wasn't something that we agreed was something we were gonna focus on, and as was, and yet, we've spent quite a bit of board administrative time on the issue, and I'm opposed to spending more time on it. It was posted for a decision tonight, the administration has had as much time, well, has had six months to consider it, they have, we've asked for their opinion, they have stated they have no compelling reason to make the change, they do not have a recommendation to go forward with the change in rezoning. I think our district needs stability, our parents need stability, these zones have been changed, um, repeatedly, and I, it, I do not hear from our administration that this is in the best interest of the district as a whole. And while I, I have deep regard and respect for Coach Willis and for Dr. Shepherd and for the programs at University High School, we as a board are charged with making decisions that are in the best interest of the district as a whole, and we hire a superintendent to give us her recommendations in that regard, and she has said there's no compelling reason to change the zones. So I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to going back to the drawing board with new numbers. Um, the other thing I have to say is, I, I'm not willing to disregard the information we've been given by the demographer we hired. We have paid them a lot of money. We spend a lot of money with a, a demographer who has given us numbers to the neighborhood, and I'm not willing to disregard what she has told us.
Well, let me ask you.
And according to the numbers that we've been given, the schools without recruiting are going to be within, um, three hundred kids.
Well, without recruiting, you're looking at the residing enrollment, and there they...
Yes, but you need to keep in mind the number of students that end up at our, at Brazos Credit Recovery, at D A E P, that if you look at the, that the numbers that go from Waco High to both of those programs, Waco High disproportionately sends kids to those programs.
But if we don't, if we, if we eliminate the recruiting, I'm looking at her numbers, then two years from now, university's at fifty-nine percent capacity.
You're not, you're not taking into consideration the, the D A E P and the Credit Recovery?
Well, that's gonna make it even fewer numbers at University High, even more kids will be leaving.
Not if you look at historical data and the number of students that go out of the Waco High attendance zones into those programs.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you, and I understand the need to minimize recruiting, we heard that from staff, but if you do that, uh, I think the presumption is, I mean, fewer parents are aware of it, fewer kids see the opportunities at A.J. Moore, fewer kids go to A.J. Moore over the long term, and then you're back to the residing enrollment, and over time, based on Tapera's numbers, those do become very disparate. I mean, one school is at ninety-three percent capacity, and the other's at sixty-three percent and thirteen hundred students.
Well, I have to say that, that...
I mean, I don't disagree with you, I just, my concern is, we...
How much more time are, are the seven of us gonna sit up here and talk about it, once a week, once a month, when we have an administration who has all day with all of the information to study it and come back to us with a recommendation, and they don't have a recommendation? She said, is there's no compelling reason to make the change?
I agree with that. I would've voted no on the change tonight. My, my concern is, when you couple that, though, with the new recruiting piece.
Right.
That there's going to be, that there is gonna be an impact on these numbers several, a couple of years out, and I just, I don't know how to address that, because we look at Tapera's numbers, they do begin to become very divergent, because the difference between proposed residing enrollment and then enrollment assuming the same number of transfers are entirely different. I mean, there are a whole number of students from Waco High.
One thing I have to say is that when you're talking about getting a strategic advantage by having a high school that's at the top of its four A or five A or six A, the fact is, the U I L system has a range for five A schools, ten fifty-nine to twenty ninety-nine, that is a huge range.
Right.
And there are school districts all in that range, and, you know, if, perhaps if there was greater interest to make it more competitive within those different, uh, categories, you would have smaller ranges for...
Yeah, I understand your, there's a big disparity in five A. Alan, what do you do about the recruiting piece, though? I mean, the, that piece where these numbers get?
Well, I, I, I'm just saying that, yes, these charts are not built with the, with the elimination of recruitment, you know, comprehended.
Right.
But what I asked the question before, and I don't think the board knows, if we don't recruit, I still think there's a compelling reason that students will wanna attend A.J. Moore because of the academy concept. And to me, that's the compelling force, and with Coach Love and Dr. Shepherd, with the systems that they have right now, students across the district, eighth graders, are gonna be introduced to those academies, they're gonna be introduced to the programs at, at Waco High. And, you know, my thinking is that, notwithstanding the charts we have, because this concept falls outside that, I think that we're gonna see results that, that don't put one school at a disadvantage to another. I, I, again, I have a high degree of confidence.
They'll still have, they'll still be able to promote their school, but they just won't have the bustin' kids for one day, so that folks will still be aware of the program.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, and I think, I think the academy concept, my feeling is, is gonna stand on its own. And I think, I hope Dr. Shepherd would, I mean, he's built that school to where it is right now, along with his faculty and staff, and it's strong, and I think it's gonna get stronger, and students are gonna respond to that. Well, you know, Coach Love has an opportunity, equal comp, opportunity, to exhibit and display his programs as well. Am I correct, Coach Love? Dr. Shepherd? Okay.
And I think, that would be my only concern, if we move forward, we need to watch those numbers.
Absolutely.
And if, if they drop off, I may need to.
Totally agree.
Give an opportunity to make folks more aware of A.J. Moore.
Absolutely, I mean, that, that is, has become and is the focus at, at university.
And there's different ways of recruiting. I mean, instead of going to, bringing all of, uh, university, uh, the, the three middle schools to university, we could just see Angela Ryer and a handful of, you know, there's a way to modify the recruitment and control that number.
I would still need to, I mean, but you're still getting back to, and I just want y'all to, we don't have to make this decision tonight.
Right.
Uh, but there were concerns from staff that any sort of recruitment was beginning to cause a division between.
Well, I just meant, if, if, if a problem arises, there's a difference.
If you see a drop in the numbers, then there may be a way to...
Yeah, just say, okay, what's your solution to this then? You know, if you don't want recruitment, and then they can't, they have a better idea than recruitment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Murphy.
All right, so, I'm a trustee for the Waco Independent School District, not for Waco High, not for university. I believe that anything that we do that impedes our ability to effectively disseminate the caliber of our curriculum and instruction constitutes us being flogged publicly. Um, there's no reason to say that we can't bring to light exceptional programs. Um, I think each campus should have an opportunity to get the word out. That's what we're here to do, to facilitate the needs of our community, our students. Um, I understand the whole idea of, um, recruiting and what the implications are, but at the end of the day, we're here to push academics. And honestly, I wish this conversation was about Waco High having an unfair robotics, um, team, or universities, academic decathlon has an unfair advantage, you, you know, and we're trying to shuffle some, some brains around, but that's not what we're talking about. So, that being said, we paid an exceptional amount of taxpayer dollars to a demographer that have given us six ways from Sunday as it relates to options. Um, we've considered at length these options. I believe we're ready to move forward.
Do you have a thought on which, I mean, option two or not? I mean, you're just ready to move forward tonight and cast a vote?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause I mean, at, at this point, you know, we, we're, we're, we were having a hard time trying to figure out how to get a couple of extra dollars to a, an expert reading teacher, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, you know, the last thing I want is for the media to be like, wow, we're, we're shuffling dollars and resources to bolster, you know, programs that are not within the scope of our, our goals that we set, you know? And so, at the end of the day, I wanna make sure that we're on target, and, and we're doing those things that we set out to do, and the things that we express to the, the, the macro community, that these are the things that we set out to do, this is how we're gonna be, uh, good custodians over your resources. Um, you know, I, believe me, I, I respect everything that each of you do, Coach, but I also was at high school with a top rusher that couldn't even get into college, because he couldn't get the minimum score on his SAT. That's just the reality of the situation. Took us to a district championship, got us to regional, couldn't even get into school. So, um, I, I, short of saying that, I, I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
I'm ready to move forward as well.
All right. I, do you have something else to say?
No.
All right, I entertain a motion with respect to item nine C.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the rezoning of Carver Middle School, um, to, uh, University High School.
All of Carver is presented on option.
A portion of.
As presented on option two.
Yeah, it's presented option two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Can we have a call vote, please?
All right. So the motion made by Mr. Pettis and seconded by Mr. Manning is that we adopt option two and move part of Carver Middle School to University High School, is that correct?
Correct.
And he has asked for a roll call vote. Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay, Mr. Murphy, whether it's your vote tonight?
Nay on two.
Pardon me?
Nay on two.
Mrs. Teakell?
No.
Mr. Sykes?
No.
Mr. Pettis?
Yes.
Mr. Dupuy?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Ooh! And Mr. Atkins. I'm sure you don't wanna put this off.
Time for a fire drill.
By my vote, the motion failed four to three, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, item B is render finding good cause that not exists and authorize a superintendent to file written complaint with ESPEC. These were the two matters that were discussed in closed session.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, it's, it's very important to us that whenever a teacher makes a commitment that they will stay with us in a classroom throughout the year, we understand when there's a family emergency, we understand whenever, um, a husband gets transferred or a wife gets transferred, but, and we work with them, the principals work with them, if, if there's a reason, we'll back them up. So when we bring them to you, they were not willing to wait for a suitable replacement, or they may have taken another job here, so I am asking that you authorize us to file a written complaint with ESPEC.
All right, they're two different personnel matters, and I think there were two different issues, my recollection from the discussion. So first, I will entertain a motion with respect to the Tennyson Middle School teacher who... respect to the Tennyson Middle School teacher to authorize the administration to file a complaint with ESPEC.
See if I can one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think there, there are separate issues there. All right, is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to file a written complaint with ESPEC with respect to the Tennyson employee?
So moved.
Thanks, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Does anybody wanna discuss that, or are we ready to move on to a vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Then with respect to the Cesar Chavez employee, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to file a written complaint.
So moved.
I think Ms. Teakell, is there a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Dupuy. Is there any discussion on that one? I know there were discussions last time about that situation. Everybody ready to proceed to a vote? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, is that, got that, Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir.
All right, I think here about item 9D. We'll move on to announcements. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Today, Waco ISD was pleased to participate in a news conference held by the Prosper Waco Initiative at La Vega High School. It was there that Dr. Matthew Polk, Executive Director of Prosper Waco, announced the beginning of a bold four-year pilot program that will provide guidance for high school students toward higher education and long-term career success. Entitled Project Link, the program will provide meaningful guidance, support, and post-secondary education planning tools to students at University High School and La Vega High School. The goal is to create a college-going culture at both schools by giving students the opportunity for 1-on-1 advising from ninth grade until they attain a degree at either McLennan Community College or Texas State Technical College. Funding for Project Link is being provided by the Bernard and Audrey Rappaport Foundation. The grant amount of $1,020,000 is one of the largest ever awarded by the Rappaport Foundation. We're very pleased to be a part of that program and a recipient. Did you want me to read that amount again, sir?
No, I heard that.
Okay. Pastors for Texas Children. On Monday, January 12th, Waco ISD was pleased to attend a special luncheon at Baylor University featuring Pastor Charles Johnson, the leader of an organization entitled Pastors for Texas Children. The goal of the group is to encourage church leaders throughout the state to be advocates for Texas schoolchildren during the 83rd legislative session and beyond. An extremely eloquent speaker, Pastor Johnson, believes church congregations can effectively urge state legislators to fund public schools adequately and equitably. Hallelujah and amen. The Texas Promise. And speaking of the education funding debate that will soon take place in Austin, Waco ISD will serve as a host site for the screening of a movie entitled The Texas Promise, a gripping story about equity, politics, money, and the education of children. Our screening is scheduled for Tuesday, February 10th, 6:30 PM, at the University High School Performing Arts Center. Set within courtrooms, classrooms, and the state capitol, the film features legislators who argue that education funding can be restored, as well as those who beat the drum for school vouchers. We are hopeful that the film's creator, Vanessa Roth, will be able to attend as well as members of Texas Can't Wait, Pastors for Texas Children, and Raise Your Hand Texas. Again, that's The Texas Promise movie, Tuesday, February 10th, 6:30 PM, at University High School. And we also want to remind everyone that we have a musical actually going on tonight, tomorrow night, a matinee Saturday at 2:00, an evening performance at 7:00, Disney's Tarzan. I promise you, you will be very impressed. You will think, you think you are at a Dallas musical.
All right. I saw part of the dress rehearsal last night, and it is impressive.
I've heard that, oh, yes, it's-
With, with the star of the show, I mean, with him.
Yeah, I, I've heard that the, there's certain stars of the show who sing very well, who's talent.
No, I'll tell you what, everybody up there's extremely talented. It was an amazing-
Yeah. Oh, and we've got little kids, and we got big kids, and-
A bunch of kids up there.
Surprises.
All right, everybody go out to Tarzan, see Tarzan this weekend over at Waco High, and then come see The Texas Promise over at University High on February 10th.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
All of you adjourn.
Thanks, sir. All those in favor say aye, or adjourn.